Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson?
Here ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Here.
Councilman Elam?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is a conditional use permit, bill number fifty-three forty-two.
Bill number five-three four-two requested by Mike Hurlbert sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP twenty-four dash zero-five for general contracting services related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner and William Nolte applicant. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Good evening council members, my name is Jack Windell. I'm with Community Development Department, one of the planners there. Tonight I will be speaking on bill number fifty-three forty-two. The applicant proposes to construct a two thousand five hundred and sixty square foot metal pole barn which will be used for his rental business which services homes throughout the St. Louis area. The proposed building will be used for storing various equipment and materials related to building construction and maintenance. The structure is not for retail purposes and there will be no clients at the property. The building will not be connected to water service or have a septic system.
Sorry.
The building's only utility will be electricity. An improved entrance is proposed off of Third Street and one parking space is required as the only employee reporting to the building is the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended recommends that the county council approve this application subject to the conditions as suggested in the attached bill. The Planning and Zoning Division also likewise recommends approval as complying with CUP criteria of section four oh five, five-ten B of the county code. If there are any questions, I can answer them, but I would like to call the applicant Brad Pryor to the stand.
Fine, thank you. Mr. Pryor.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. Council members, good evening. As Jack said, my name is Brad Pryor. I was hired by Bill Nolte, the one of the applicants for this project to assist him with the conditional use permit process. I work at Hamilton-Webber right across the street. So, as Jack explained, the requested use is for contracting services. The reason for the request is that Mr. Nolte, Bill, he operates and runs various rental properties throughout the St. Louis area. And as part of that process, he provides contracting services, whether it be remodeling, maintenance and repair, restoration, just various items like that. And whenever there's a project or anything that's going on, Bill will either complete the project himself or alternatively, if it's a project that say it's a complete HVAC replacement, he'll hire out subcontractors that then do that work. Now, in any event, whether Bill does the work or hires it out, he provides and supplies all of the materials. Everything from HVAC to roof to flooring to sheathing to receptacles, conduit, Romex, everything. And over the years, Bill has amassed, as you can imagine, quite a bit of inventory that has been stored in various locations throughout the county, at his house, at son's house, his brother's house, all over. So, the idea that him and Stephen came up with was to build this building to kind of serve as a central hub or storage type area and further into that contracting type purpose. Bill contacted county staff, explained the plan of what what his thoughts were and what he wanted to do. County staff came back and said, "Well, that sounds like it qualifies as general contracting services. We're gonna go ahead, it's zoned agriculturally, you need a CUP for that, you need to go through the process." That's when Bill hired me, we had various communications with staff, got the application submitted, concept plan, all the requirements, so on and so forth. We were at Planning and Zoning, we received a unanimous recommendation of approval, and now here we are this evening. I did just want to hit on a few items with respect to how the the conduct of the use. Everything's gonna be occurring inside, right? There's nothing that that happens outside, there's not gonna be any storage of anything outside or any operations that occur outside. There'd be minimal impact on traffic, as Jack mentioned, there's no retail component, there's no employees that are coming and going every day. It's generally Bill is the only employee and he's really the the main one that'll be there taking inventory, determining what needs to be sourced for this project or that project, whatever the case may be. And honestly, there may be weeks at a time where if there's no projects, that Bill may not even show up. Aesthetics, there's their plan right now is to remove some older structures that are in the area on that property and replace it again with the pole barn. And then with respect to drainage, there's a culvert, an old culvert along Third Street there that connects with ninety-four that will be replaced as part of this project too. Should you have any questions, I'll be here. Bill and his son Stephen are here, and that's pretty much just the kind of the summation of this requested use.
Thanks, sir. All right, do we have any but any questions?
I just got a question.
Yes.
On the on this barn, this is already zoned agriculture, why would you even get a CUP? Why won't you just build a barn?
Well, so the because of the connection between his rental property business and the purpose of using it as the the central hub, so to speak, for that purpose, that's more of a commercial nature. I think that's where staff came back and said that it's more the general contracting service purpose, which is why the CUP was required.
Yeah, but if he's if one guy and he's storing stuff in there, I don't know why you're getting a CUP, it makes no sense to me, but it just doesn't, but whatever. I mean, I don't know why he'd do it, who'd do all this, he could just build a barn.
Right, that was that was just the the staff analysis and the the route that we proceeded with.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, it so it's this this barn's going on on just this one plot, so we're assuming it's just the one Parsons, whatever number it is.
Yeah, on lot eleven.
So, you're following all the setbacks and everything that you would have to follow if you were gonna put a house or something on it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the the cut's gonna be right across from the post office, so I guess the county would give you a permit on, is it gonna be as wide as the garage door or how you gonna do the cut on that?
No, so it'll be, I believe the max is forty feet that's allowed. So, in addition to the CUP, we'll have to get a highway permit, so as part of the the building and process, the building permit process, that'll be addressed there. But I believe it's shown as forty feet and I believe that's the max.
So, it's just it's just basically a storage, Bill, I mean, 'cause there are people concerned, a construction company, there'd be all this equipment and loudways and all this stuff.
Right, and that, I guess, I I should emphasize that, there won't be any major construction type equipment stored there, any any major construction type activity occurring there. Everything that this use will be facilitating will be off-site, off-premises at the rental properties.
And it says in the conditions, no outside storage, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Including equipment, does it say including equipment?
Uh, it does not, but I would interpret that to be broad enough to include.
Can we add that, 'cause we don't have much of backhoes and dump trucks and stuff out there?
Right, yeah, I there would be no issue with that.
All right, so we'll, I'll talk to Rory about that, just 'cause that was just some of the concerns about, you know.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
I swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county public advocate. I'm a supporter of this application with the following conditions and amendments to the conditions that were placed by county staff and Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a mixed use, it's in downtown unincorporated county known as a defiance area. This property abuts, I believe it's, if I recall, to the north and to the west residential dwellings. So, staff recommended a type-two landscape buffer, I'm recommending that you go with a type-three landscape buffer. And what that would require would be a fence, which I think is totally apropos in this case. It would require both landscaping on either side of the fence and also allow for a berm. I think because the residents were there first, we need to protect their rights and their property values. Couple other things that came up, which I disagree with. It says that there shall be one employee on the property at any given time. I think that that's impractical and, in my opinion, could be illegal. For example, if you have Mr. Nolte trying to move a hot water tank heater for one of his properties, I don't know if any of you have installed or moved a hot water tank heater, but it's pretty heavy. And so, I would think that it might take two or three people to move a hot water tank heater, and I'd like the council to remove that condition, that only one person at the property at any given time. There's gonna be times when there's gonna be need for two or three people to move a heavy item, and I think that's very important. The applicant and the attorney had said that HVAC is contracted out, and that's another heavy item, so that's probably taken care of. The buffer I talked about, moving from a type-two to a type-three landscape buffer, the hours of operation came up also. I believe inside the staff recommendations, it says that no noise can be heard at the property line and shall be produced after nine P.M. There was a question that came up from Planning and Zoning, and I forget what the outcome was about the start time. I would think that seven or eight o'clock A.M. would be something ideal, probably the seven A.M. But I would imagine if this is a an area to store things for rental properties, that there's gonna be emergencies to crop up or happen from time to time. If it's in the middle of the winter and you have frozen pipes, he's gonna have to be there maybe at two or three o'clock in the morning to get piping to fix a particular property if there's a freezing issue. And the recommendations to comply with section four oh five, point five-one-zero B of the county code. Number one, a site plan shall conform to the conditional use permit shall be submitted to the Community Development Department, a permit obtained from the St. Charles County Highway Department for a commercial entrance. Number three is a type-two landscape buffer shall be installed and maintained along the northern northeastern property line. Four is all exterior lighting on the site should be utilized, full cutoff light fixtures. Number five, as I said, no noise can be heard at the property line, shall be produced after nine P.M. Number six, I would ask that you remove as a condition, no more than one employee shall report to the building at any one time. It's clearly impractical and clearly unconstitutional and illegal, and we have a sitting circuit judge that probably could attest that that's unconstitutional to allow one person to enjoy the enjoyment of their property when they need help doing something. And number seven is no approved conditional use permit shall be active until all conditions of approval have been met. And so, I would ask that the council fully unanimously approve this with the conditions that I recommended, especially the type-three landscape buffer from a type-two. I believe it's very important in this instance in removing that only one employee can be at the property at one given time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Rory, if I want to add the no equipment storage such as trucks, trailers, tractors, excavating equipment or farmer equipment, can, do I do it now? Okay, so, and also, if in fact it says no, does it say can't start at nine A.M. or no noise till nine A.M.? 'Cause that's a little restrictive too.
No noise between nine P.M. and six A.M.
Okay. I mean, some of these conditions are kind of, I mean, who who's gonna, I mean, like one employee, that does seem a little ridiculous, but I mean, you know.
It's noise that could be heard past the property line.
Okay.
All right, step up, yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted, so the noise issue, that what was discussed at P&amp;Z was whether or not that was, whether or not anybody could be at the property or just whether or not noise could be heard at the property line. The conclusion there was that it was noise at the property line, so it doesn't prevent people from being at the property just being noisy, sort of. And then the employee issue, I think the reason for that condition that staff added that was just in part because Bill is basic, he is the only employee. And, you know, the the way that it was discussed at P&amp;Z, which that wouldn't prevent, say, Bill's son from going up and helping him, because Bill's, or Bill's son's not an employee. So, it's not, that issue is also inconsequential.
Thank you, anyone, yes, Mr. Swanson?
So, you're fine with the conditions as presented?
Right, yeah, we don't have any any objection.
Okay. Action, you're the applicant. There we go.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on.
That was the final speaker.
That was the final speaker, okay. Moving on, we move to public comments, just a reminder, we will limit you to three minutes on public comments, and Lori.
John Glenn regarding Community Assistance Board.
Welcome, Mr. Glenn.
Good evening, thank you. I'm not speaking as a private citizen, so I'm the chairman of the board for the Community Assistance Board. So, they stay this on time, I'm a.
Could you pull that mic up a little bit?
All right. Good evening, I'm John Glenn, I'm the current chairperson of the St. Charles County Community Assistance Board. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. I'm not native to St. Charles County, but I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six. And and I've had a front-seat view of the growth of this county, both as a citizen and professionally, as as an employee of the United Way of Greater St. Louis. I have a professional observance of the of the fast growth and the effect it has had on the people of St. Charles County. Having been appointed by the county executive, it's been my pleasure to serve in various capacities on the board for nearly twelve years. And that too is informed my perception of the effect of growth on the county. The Community Assistance Board was established in nineteen ninety-six as the successor organization of the St. Charles County Homeless Board. The Community Assistance Board receives funding from three sources. In November nineteen ninety-one, it was established that the board would receive three dollars from every transaction recorded with the recorded deeds. The second funding source is from the St. Charles County Indigent Fund. That amount has fluctuated wildly since two thousand and seven, and the current funding level is forty thousand dollars. In two thousand and eight, a third funding source was created to help meet the growing needs of those homeless and indigent persons. The program depends on taxpayers making direct contributions in conjunction with payment of their annual property taxes, which doesn't work all that well. It was estimated that the source had a potential raise of more than three hundred thousand dollars annually, but to date, the receipts have never exceeded five thousand dollars. Today, I'm here to discuss the fears of these funding sources to meet the needs of our growing population, to include the homeless and indigent citizens. Since nineteen ninety, the county poverty rate has ranged from four-point-six, spiked over five percent to as much as seven-point-one percent in twenty-twelve, and is currently at about five-point-two percent. Those numbers in themselves are not so remarkable until you consider the population growth during these years. In nineteen ninety, our population was two-hundred-and-twelve thousand. According to the twenty-twenty census, our population had grown to four-hundred-and-five thousand. What that means is that in nineteen ninety, we had estimated a homeless and indigent population to be about nine thousand eight hundred people.
You can continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. And the count in the twenty-twenty census goes into poverty level number to more than twenty-one thousand. Going back as far as I can, I find that too, the set cap funding from all sources has fluctuated wildly. Since two thousand and eight, the funding ranges from a high of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to the twenty-twenty-four funding level of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. The homeless portion of that funding is reflective of the high level of fee-based activities in the county. In two thousand and eight, the indigent fund represented four-hundred thousand of the seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that was allocated. The indigent portion dropped to thirty, hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand in two thousand and nine and two-hundred-and-seventy thousand in two, in twenty-ten. It appears that during the recovery from the financial crisis of two thousand and eight, the indigent fund level dropped to forty thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven. And that has been at that level since that date. Keep in mind, the growth in the county population and the corresponding growth of people in in poverty in our county, this funding level has resulted in an untenable situation for our funded agencies as they work to help meet the needs of those in poverty. The board's mission is to support homeless, near homelessness, and indigent residents in St. Charles County by assisting in the development of programs and services that encourages self-sufficiency. At the current funding levels, we cannot achieve our mission. My ask tonight is threefold in an order of priority. One, begin the process to restore indigent funding to a level comparable to that in two thousand and eight when calculated on a per capita basis, remembering that it was nine thousand then and it was, and and now it's twenty-one thousand people appropriate appropriately. Take actions, the second one is to take actions needed to bring the issue to the of the the fee-based support to the people for an appropriate increase which accounts for inflation. The fee-based report was, it was a result of legislation, the people voted on that in the November of ninety-one, I believe it was, when they set that rate. And so, that's what it's been for all that time, and we think that that for inflation purposes, that number should be coming up, the fees should have raised, and our share of that, given our mission. And and then we should apply additional resources to develop a means of giving Project Care a more favorable platform to attract donors. It's on the tax form, on the tax payment form, and we're just not getting the feedback that we'd like to get from that. We've done a lot of marketing things to try to improve outreach to the citizens, but it's just not done the job for us. So, I'm keenly aware that funding will not solve this issue or the big picture issue of affordable housing, but this is what I believe we need in the interim. The cost of not addressing poverty and the wraparound services needed to move people towards self-sufficiency is greater than it is to solve the problem.
Thank you, sir. We're 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 happy that you made us aware of these these problems, 'cause it was something that I was obviously not aware of.
Okay.
We'll see if we can look in it and see if we can we can help the organization.
Okay, and with your permission, could I submit my remarks for the record?
Sure, definitely, definitely.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'll pay you for the extra moments.
Arnie Deanoff regarding the county council.
Good evening, members of the county council, my name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county public advocate, also running November fifth for state representative of the sixty-fourth State Legislative District. I have a couple issues on the agenda that I'd like to talk about. Number one is facilities, the firing range pavilion Hutchins Recreation and Design for ninety-seven thousand dollars. We need to have a regional discussion on law enforcement. We have competing law enforcement issues here within St. Charles County. The county law enforcement center for approximately two and a half million to three million dollars is being invested in bush wildlife. The Chesterfield Valley with Bob Brinkman, the best friend that flew the governor to the cheese game, Bob Brinkman, who's the best friend of also our county executive Steve Elman, went to the state legislature and got the governor to approve fifty to fifty-five million dollar state appropriation for a law enforcement center in Chesterfield Valley, a regional law enforcement center. And then you have O'Fallon in St. Charles City who's who have entered into a cooperative agreement between twenty-eight million to forty-eight million dollars in a flood plain that's gonna flood every three to five years on Missouri Highway seventy-nine. So, we need to have this discussion to save taxpayer money. The purchase of two two thousand and twenty-four Chevy Tahoe pursuit vehicles, Don Brown Chevrolet, for a hundred and three thousand dollars in St. Louis city rather than buying it right here at home in St. Charles County, we're not even supporting our neighbors and our own businesses. That's pathetic. The agreement with St. Peters for the operation of license plate reader system, there's a lot of federal and state constitutional questions. Amendment four of our Bill of Rights may be violated, and I ask that you vote no against this agreement with the city of St. Peters. We don't want to be tracked and followed with license plate readers. This South St. Louis city citizen, Mr. Roy O'Sullivan, who's in violation of our current home rule county charter, why do we even have a charter if he's not gonna abide by it and be a resident and a registered voter in St. Charles County? He takes the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back down to South St. Louis and spends it down there. Read my lips and listen carefully to my chapter six-ten point zero-two-two and six-ten point zero-two-three request, Roy O'Sullivan. I would like all boards, all appointments and all commissions that our two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollar director of administration, Joanne Lycum, serves on, who's been appointed by Steve Elman or other authorities. Number two, Bob Schnarr's wasteful consulting contract while receiving a full logger's pension, I would like to have his written email to me, Bob Schnarr's contract, Mr. O'Sullivan, stop playing political games. I don't know how you run your administration over there, but it stinks. Number three, why and what is the holdup of Tracy Bayne, B-A-Y-N-E, not being appointed the actual without being babysat by micromanage?
Thank you, sir.
Can I have a few seconds like the previous speaker?
No, you cannot, 'cause you cannot.
Bob Schnarr, who's getting a full logger's pension.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Why are we playing politics?
Thank you, sir.
She deserves to be appointed as a full-time director of finance.
Thank you.
The final speaker.
Final speaker, okay, thank you. All right, next up is oral report from a county executive.
Uh, no report, sort of.
All right, we have the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the firing range off and the traffic, the green light, traffic light cameras.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will remove those two items.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, let's come back to the two items that have been removed, starting with Mr. Brazel and the first one.
I just a quick question, Joanne or whoever.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, the firing range, that's that's funded with, this is for design only and this is grant money, correct?
This is FBI money, so the FBI is going to be joining us at the range, which will also be allowed to shoot on what they're funding down there, which is gonna free up space for the other police agencies to shoot for free on that ground. So, this is the structure that prevent, that protects them from the rain.
No, I understand all that, this is, is this the actual cost of it or is this the just the design fees?
Uh, that's the recreation and design fees, that's for the pavilion itself.
That's for both, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, the next question.
It's an open-air pavilion, councilman.
No, I understand, I understand. And then the Gateway Green Light, where is it, what's what's this camera thing that I, is that, that's not cameras, is it, that the green light maintenance, is that cameras, John, or is that?
So, on the consent agenda is the service agreement with Gerschner Electric, which provides maintenance to our Gateway Green Light infrastructure and traffic signals throughout the county. Now, further down on the agenda, we have an intergovernmental agreement, which is a.
Oh, that's the license plate reader one, okay. I apologize, I pulled the wrong, wrong one off.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the two items that have been removed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, sir. We will move on to the bills for final passage, beginning with bill number fifty-three thirty-seven.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Highway Department and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to install a stream gauge on Meddy Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executives or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Highway Department and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to install a stream gauge on Meddy Road.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Okay, bill number fifty-three thirty-seven passes. Next up is bill number fifty-three thirty-eight.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-eight, in ordinance accepting a grant for the office of the regional medical examiner.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-eight, in ordinance accepting a grant for the office of the regional medical examiner.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, bill number fifty-three thirty-eight has passed. Next bill for final passage is bill fifty-three thirty-nine.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-nine, in ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to the installation, maintenance, and operation of a license plate reader system between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters.
Okay, questions, comments?
Yeah, I understand. Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, I'm, I am concerned about this bill. I won't be supporting it. I, I realize that you could argue it both ways, I get it. I just, I don't know, I just sometimes think we're getting too many of these cameras and too much government control and interfering, so that's, I don't know.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-nine, in ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to the installation, maintenance, and operation of a license plate reader system between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Okay, bill number fifty-three thirty-nine passes. Next up is bill number fifty-three forty.
Bill number fifty-three forty, in ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Department of Corrections, Vital Core Health Strategies, and the Community College of Jefferson County and its nursing students to establish a clinical and training experience for nursing students from the Community College of Jefferson County.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number fifty-three forty, in ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Department of Corrections, Vital Core Healthcare Strategies, and the Community College of Jefferson County and its nursing students to establish a clinical and training experience for nursing students from the Community College of Jefferson County.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Okay, bill number fifty-three forty passes, and the last bill for final passage is bill fifty-three forty-one.
Bill number fifty-three forty-one, in ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-five rates for the group medical insurance benefits with Cigna Health Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured Delta Dental Insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number fifty-three forty-one, in ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-five rates for the group medical insurance benefits with Cigna Healthcare Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured Delta Dental Insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Okay, bill fifty-three forty-one passes. Now we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with bill fifty-three forty-three.
Bill, bill number fifty-three forty-three, requested by Michael Hurlberg, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program or Urban County CDBG program, namely a twenty-twenty-four subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, will we move on to bill number fifty-three forty-four?
Bill number fifty-three forty-four, requested by Kurt Frizz, sponsored by Terry Hollander. In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to data sharing between the St. Charles County Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to the last bill for introduction, fifty-three forty-five.
Bill number fifty-three forty-five, requested by Bob Schner, sponsored by Terry Hollander. In ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-four budget adopted as ordinance twenty-three dash one zero four as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between lying items and the general fund budgets of the Collector of Revenue, the Police Department, the Fire and EMS Division, and the Department of Emergency Communications, appropriating additional inter-fund transfers between the Family Arena Fund and the shuttered venue operators grant fund, and additional capital expenditures in the Family Arena Fund.
Questions or comments on fifty-three forty-five? Seeing none, that concludes our bills for introduction. There are no bills on the table. So do we have any announcements or miscellaneous? Yes, Mr. Swanson?
If I could, I know we had a moment of silence, and I don't know if this was regarding our paramedic who passed away this week at the young age of twenty-seven over at Station Twelve, having some friends who are SCAD. Yeah, it's tough. And I was hoping that's what it was, and there wasn't an announcement with that. So our thoughts and prayers are with all the individuals who know him and his family at this time. Also, I know this is kind of out of the ordinary, but we have a guest in here who's first time, and that's Casey Hallred over there with four H. And I want to call her out. She had an interview with me, we talked about a whole bunch of different stuff. That lady right there, watch out. She is a powerhouse, she's over at Orchard Farm High School as a senior this year. And this is a girl to keep an eye on. And I hope you get into politics, because you're an amazing young lady.
I agree.
Welcome. Any, any other announcements? Okay, I need the motion to adjourn.
So much.
We are adjourned, thank you, folks.